I don't know where it's at, Al.
I'm really glad you were there. I think you actually kept anything snarky from happening. I think that you actually kept them from being aggressive.
Somewhere along the line, we didn't get the payroll register back for the longevity pay. We need to get you guys to sign that.
Did what?
The longevity pay, we didn't get that signed. So I need to have that signed.
Whatever reason, they felt like it would be dangerous for people to have that stuff. It was kind of number, even though we don't. Every time you write a check, whoever gets your check has your account. So it really doesn't make sense. It was just a way for her to bill us for the time.
But for me, just by answering some of your data, but he would, you know, ask you some questions and things like that. It was, it was kind of like, you know.
Mostly, mostly, it was just the practice of this is a, this agency that pays tax money. And they have to comply to it for them. So it wasn't so much that we were looking for something specific, but simply to make the line in the stands. You actually can't say no. It's not, it's not appropriate for a quasi-governmental agency to say no to a court. So mostly, it was just a practice of showing that that has to be done. We weren't, we weren't looking for something bad. We're actually kind of shocked at how much money they're setting aside with savings. And it's tax money that's supposed to be for senior citizens. It doesn't make any sense why it's being forwarded. Because there's a, there's a levy that's giving them money every year. So it makes zero sense that they're forwarding money, whereas Siltin actually has to struggle to pay their, some of their bills. It makes no sense that they're forwarding. It probably should be going to the seniors. But I actually don't understand what kind of, you know, like what, what kind of services we're supposed to provide. Pretty much every county in Kansas now has shit counselors that are volunteer. So Lincoln County has a shit counselor who isn't volunteer. And I'm not saying that she shouldn't have her job. That's not what I'm saying. It's just that, where did that come from? Where was it decided that we needed someone paid to do the service that fortunately every other county has a volunteer? Yeah, so I, I don't know either. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I'm not saying that she shouldn't have a job. I mean, I, I don't know.
Probably move back to the, to the beginning. Somebody had asked me to argue that, I'll go get that information somewhere.
Right, I just, I'm just curious, what was the issue?
We could sign that deal. I don't know if you want to or not. That's the longevity pay. Require the signature, just like the others.
So you guys give longevity pay to elected officials? Why is that?
Probably when they started.
I guess most of them worked here before they were elected.
Yeah, the ones that couldn't come, they could have, they could ask up taken too.
Never got capped off.
Yeah, but meals on wheels is actually a federal program. It's funded somewhere else.
But I think that's what people were thinking.
Thinking, ah, gotcha.
Well, this isn't right then, Dawn. This still has the commissioner on it.
One more people from an age category.
Well, we already, we issued the checks. What else that you could do is say.
I mean, a lot of thinking would have been.
Yeah, I, I, I really know.
The one I laid on the table said.
Everybody ready? You ready, Dawn? I'll call the meeting to order. We'll take a look at the minutes.
Dawn, I think you need a dollar sign under motions. The county attorney is receiving $4,612.08 in the form of a check without itemized receipts. All the other numbers have dollar signs, if it's a dollar amount. Law would probably have a comma after it.
Motion to approve is correct.
Second.
In motion to approve the minutes in a second. We're gonna get a further discussion. If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes.
Aye.
I did have an error in a couple of weeks ago's minutes that you guys didn't catch. And Terry Heeder pointed it out. Do you want to work with that now? Or do you want to wait until I'm on the inter?
Doesn't matter, I guess.
When we set the price for the gravel, I put $2 per ton and it should be $2 per yard. I don't really know how to fix it, besides to have you guys just make a new motion.
Make a motion to a correction of the minutes of.
Do we correct the minutes or do we just restate the price?
You can do either or. I'd say if you want to make a correction to the motion that was made on, and I can cite that date that the motion was made, to correct the pricing from $2 per yard to $2 per ton.
It would have been January 2nd, I believe.
I think it was January 2nd or December 2019.
On January 2nd, I have Aljo Wallace moved the increase. Price of gravel to $2 per ton. Effective immediately, seconded by Alexis Flew, motion carried. That should be corrected to $2 per yard.
So the person to do, that they moved to correct the price per gravel.
I moved to correct the price, the adjusted price of gravel to per cubic yard.
To, I'll say $2 per cubic yard.
Do I have a second? I'll say. For all those in favor, say aye.
Thanks, Dawn. Pointed that out. Went by me.
You got something, David?
Just burn ban information pertaining to the act of burn ban that we're currently in. Still, information from the weather service gathered just this morning. And again, no noticeable chance of precipitation through Saturday or Sunday. I just wanted to confirm that we still are in act of burn ban.
We didn't get the two inches of snow they were talking about.
No, no.
God bless you.
I think it needs to stay in myself.
Yeah, I believe so.
It's just too dangerous.
We got a chance Sunday, so we'll be back in here Monday. You agree, whatever.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Yep.
We have a receipt here from Lincoln Building Supply that was submitted by Lincoln Park Manor. And most of it looks like receptacles and switches and some PVC, maybe for a sink trap. And electrical receptacles, but I would suggest that we remove the glass cleaner. I don't believe that we need to be buying cleaning supplies. I think that's their responsibility.
I would probably concur with that. You want to contact them, Dawn, and see how they want to. We'll contact the building supply and have them change the ticket. Did you need something real quick with Dawn?
Yes, I do. The heater on the east side, the old heater is down.
Good.
They won't be able to become till this afternoon to check it out. But I guess if it needs repair, we'll just get it repaired. If it needs replaced, we'll get bids.
Is that the one that was in there?
The old, old one. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know how old it is. I tried to find a manual or something. I'm sure it was there when the hospital did home health in there. But whether they replaced it when they remodeled or not, I can't, I mean, I have no idea how old it is. But it's got to be at least 30 years old, but probably.
Just doesn't come on or?
Comes on and blows, but no heat. So it might be something really simple. I just, since you were here today, I just wanted to let you know it's down. I mean, maybe it's just the pilot light went out. I'm not, it blew the, it blew the switch, the breaker. So we have to go in on holidays and read the vaccine refrigerators, and that's how I figured it out. I want to mystery.
Well, it could be 30 years old, probably.
At least, probably. I would guess.
I guess I'd be reluctant to put a lot of money in.
Okay. What's a lot?
Well, I don't know.
We just replaced the fan motor probably six months ago. That wasn't real expensive. I think it was a couple hundred dollars.
Is it a pulse or what is it, you know?
I have no idea.
You just work some.
Street.
Streets.
Generally. Maybe ask the other ones, but they haven't responded, so we just go with streets. I guess if it's, I don't know. I, I don't know. To fix it, because, you know, labor is so high too, so it's usually not the part. It's the labor more than that. Like I said, it might be something easy, but since it blew the breaker, I'm thinking it's probably something else, but maybe not.
You say the fan motor was replaced?
About six months ago. And it was blowing. I mean, it was blowing that part of it. So that's what I don't understand. If it blew the breaker, why, why was that part still running?
I don't understand that either, because the gas furnace isn't there.
Yes.
So the major electrical usage would be the throttle motor. And I don't know why it would be on two separate circuits.
I don't know. Terry, I'm not, I'm not electrical. I can tell you that. So, but. Or I can, you know, we have the other side, so we just open it up the doors and try to make do. It's cold in there today, but it's cold today. So we are cold today, but we're, I mean, we're keeping it.
So I'm.
If we open the bathroom doors and everything, that's which what we're doing. We're just propping everything open. So the other side's heating everything, but.
I guess get an estimate of repairs and get, you know, if it's, if it's in the hundreds, get hold of Dawn. And maybe she can give us a call or something, and we can make a quick decision. You know, putting $500 or a 30-year-old furnace, I really wouldn't want to put $500 or 30-year-old furnace. We're better off replacing it, probably.
Do you know what size it is?
Efficiency probably has improved.
I have no idea on that one. We don't have any manuals or books or anything. I don't know that there's any writing or anything on it, so. And like I said, maybe the pilot light just went out. I don't know. I took the front door off, but I can't see anything. So I don't know where it's.
Depending on, you know, some of them have igniters and some of them have the old pilots and.
I just think it's really weird that the.
If it's a pulse, it's got a spark plug in it.
And the fuse may not have anything to do. The fuse says air conditioning, but we check those breakers probably, you know, every other week or so, because the vaccine refrigerators on there were required to. So that's the reason I know it wasn't, it wasn't off earlier, so. I just wanted you to know what was on. And like I said, they can't get it out till this afternoon at least, so I can't even tell you. I think it is.
See what it is and call Dawn, but, you know, we can make a, she can call us on the phone or something and get it.
Okay, I'll do that.
Pine at home has an internal igniter, and there's a little like switch that power cord is coming.
I think it's. I think it's too old, it's probably to have that. Wouldn't it be?
It could have been a pulse, maybe. Pulse, the pulses have had that set up for a long, long time.
I don't know. We've never had any trouble with this one, other than the fan motor, and we could hear it clunking. So that was pretty easy. All right. Well, I'll let you know when it's good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Deborah?
I went through all the ones at Public Works. I even went through, and they're included in the landfill and the weed department ones, because those are part of theirs as well. And I made the same changes on those that I did on, on these. I added the verbiage about climbing ladders, some of the weight changes. The weight changes are different on the bridge crew than on the others. Michael said they deal with more weight, so that's why theirs says lifting and moving objects weighing up to 50 pounds daily and occasionally 100. So we included that. And when we did the climbing, when Michael and I were visiting, he said that he felt like more than just the ladder, but they have to be able to climb on and off of the equipment. He said that's probably something they do more than they do anything else, because they have to get in the blade and out of the blade, climb up on and in. And so we included that as well. And we included walking, bending, kneeling, climbing a ladder, climbing a ladder and on and off of equipment, and lifting and moving objects up to 50 pounds. Some of them, like the bridge crew, we made sure they're under working conditions. It talked about the walking, because they do a lot more extensive up and down the embankments, things like that, for that as well. The ones, the landfill and at the weed department, I did include in theirs as well. The manual laborer and the walking, bending, kneeling, same verbiage on theirs as well, so that they would all be consistent.
And I just did two-sided, because I feel like I just keep killing the tree.
Yeah, that's okay. It's better. I, I'm just getting the equipment operator for the bridge crew. Is just, what, slightly different than the regular equipment operator?
It is slightly different, yes. Not, not, not a lot, because they are predominantly assigned to the bridge crew. So theirs is a little different. And basically, there's the bridge crew and the bridge crew hopefully forming. Then the equipment operators that are motor grader operators. And the other ones are like, we have a loader operator and a doser operator that work in the pit. And so their job is primarily a little bit different, but not a lot.
You ran this by?
I contacted K Camp, and Bud and I visited about some of the changes and whatnot. And he said that when we reach the point that, that we're done, there will be an extra charge. But we can send them to an attorney with their firm, and that they will have them looked at for us. But I did talk to him, and he said, you know, if there are essential functions, you know, you want to be as descriptive as you can. You don't want to, like, change the job description just to suit here and there. But he said as long as those are essential functions, those are good things, and we discuss the verbiage and whatnot. So he didn't seem to have too much trouble. He said sometimes some of your, your functions are one size fits all, and sometimes they're not. And that's why, like, the weight limit is different on the bridge crew.
What does the handbook say about employee discipline?
Regarding?
Just if you have any recollection of what the.
I don't, the wording is, there's a large section. I don't have to know it off the top of my head.
I, I'd just like to ask the board, how are we going to pursue employee discipline with equipment operators who have refused to basically abide by their job description under the portion that it says frequent contact with the general public, coworkers and supervisory personnel is expected? How are we going to remedy that situation? I've described it in the past.
We have two people in this department where I've explained a situation where I was refused information personally, not just as supervisory personnel. I noticed, Dawn, I think maybe you changed on the website what the, what the mission statement is for the commission, and it, and it went over how you had read to the statute, you had read to me the statute about, you know, the powers of the commission only exist at the table. However, I believe as an individual, I'm still a member of the general public, regardless if you don't want to see it as supervisory personnel on the scene. But when we have an issue such as refusal of information and/or misappropriating information to.
I just want to clarify, I didn't change nothing on the website. I didn't know that Hannah did change anything on the website. And I'll address whatever it was that was changed. So if you say.
The commission page, the commission page now reads basically a summarized version of the statute that you read to me about, because when I came in for information and you said that I needed to fill out a CORA request, as would any individual person, because as an individual, there aren't any commission powers associated with one person, which brings me to a whole nother topic. I guess we never did find out what happened at those executive school board meetings when we had one member of the commission attend. That's another interesting subject we've not finished. But back to this, the, the commission page, just briefly, I wanted to ask, can we put back on there in addition to what was added, what was taken off? Because I think that was important. It had basically a mission statement.
I don't know what was on it, so.
I don't remember either exactly what was on it, what, what she cleaned up or changed, or I don't, I don't know. We have to ask her and kind of see if she.
I'll ask her.
Okay, so back to the job description. What was your?
Yeah, it says frequent contact with the general public, coworkers and supervisory personnel is expected. And I think that's wonderful, and we have people not abiding by that. So I was wondering what the, what the corresponding handbook remedy is for this situation. Do we need to be a little more specific here and say frequent contact with the general public?
Well, I don't know. What do you, what?
I mean, it says it is expected. It doesn't say what the expectation of the behavior of the equipment operator is. What would the, what would the board suggest would be the expected behavior of an equipment operator be when contact, when in contact with one of these entities listed? Maybe words like attentive and respectful, that might be.
Well, um, I don't know. It's kind of a, a twofold thing, because. Are we talking about the job description or are we talking about a disciplinary issue or a handbook issue?
It goes hand in hand. I mean, if, if we don't have any expectations set forth here, you know, it says frequent contact is expected. It doesn't say what they do or do not have to do.
Because like, the health department says the same thing. Daily contact with the general public, subordinate personnel, coworkers and supervisory personnel is expected. So if we're going to change Public Works, wouldn't we want to change theirs then as well? Or, I mean, because they deal more with the public more than, than Public Works. And I'm not picking on them. They're just the ones that we've already been through, that you guys were comfortable with and said, well, fine. So I.
Well, I would say reading this, one should expect that that frequent contact would be normal and dealt with in an appropriate manner. But I've personally seen that that is not being adhered to in the department.
Guess I'm not sure what we would add to that, to.
I, I don't know either.
I think the hard thing is, is how about we have people pull guns on our staff? You know, I get that we want, we want them to be.
The respect should be both ways.
We have to protect or increase a little bit as well.
You had, there are police reports of weapons being pulled on county employees.
I believe the one they contacted was the sheriff's department. And in the past, there's always, it's, there's been.
I think the public that's been upset, and sometimes they get a little vocal.
And does that, was there an established situation out of that? Because I'm quite aware of false police reports being made, so, you know, was that ever established? Or is that just something that you're repeating hearsay?
I believe that my understanding was that there was an incident of some form involving a member of the public with a weapon. And I believe they did contact the sheriff's department. I don't know that for a fact, but it's something that I can look into, rather than state whether it is or isn't a fact until I know for sure. But there have been some incidents in the past, you know. But there have been some incidents in the past, you know.
There's been an incident on another county's road that we maintained that occurred as well.
But back to the job description. Perhaps on all of them then, including the health department and all the other departments, we, I, I don't know what your thought is, add some kind of phrase that the employee is expected to treat the public cordially?
Is there anything in the handbook that addresses?
I don't have the handbook with me because we were discussing job descriptions.
Well, I understand that.
But I would, I would look at that. I can take a look at that.
I would think in the handbook would be a more appropriate place for it.
That's true. It would, it would correlate.
Yes.
I think we're just staying here that there is the possibility that there will have to be interaction between the job and the public. When you're working this kind of. And I agree with you. It has to be a two way street. There has to be respect from both sides.
But from both sides. And, and we can, we can add something. And I would then go back and add it to every employees that discusses dealing with the public because that would be.
I think you just need on these job descriptions, just to say that there is the possibility that there will be times when you have to interact with the public.
I do have a question. When it says under essential functions that they maintain an accurate daily log of all work completed, is, is that paperwork that we provide to them or are they?
On their, one of the things that they do more so than any of the other departments, their time card, they have to break out like.
So that's on there.
Like the mechanic, it'll say that they were working on this piece of equipment for three hours and it will say worked on the heater. I'm sorry, I'm not a mechanic. Changed the oil, did this, did that. They break that out so they can track where they are and what they're doing and kind of track some of that work a little bit better. And we expect them to be pretty detailed about that. And it is something that they do, that they do. So do we want to add something about being cordial to the public?
I think we can look at that in the handbook.
Yeah, I think.
Just look at it in the handbook and not on the job description. Sounds very good.
Unless at least look at the handbook and see if it's.
We'll be looking at the handbook this year. Okay, that sounds good. Anything else?
I, I still believe that if you're going to have someone who is responsible for other employees such as, you know, the head of the department, even, even the head of the bridge crew. Where is the?
I have to.
What do you have for, for the bridge crew?
Foreman.
Foreman?
It was the second one. Did I miss one?
I have bridge crew equipment operator. Oh, here it is. No, I'm sorry. It was behind the office manager. I just feel like the expectations of experience and education for the people who are overseeing other personnel is low.
Okay.
And if you're not going to have graduated high school, you know, in a normal manner and then obtained a job and experienced that way. And if you're not, you know, if you're not going to have that particular education before the experience and or after. I understand the experience itself can serve as fulfilling the requirement. But basically we're saying anybody can be head of twenty five other people if they have one year of experience in a GED. I just don't find that to be appropriate. If the bridge crew foreman is in charge of constructing bridges, I would think he would need to have a little bit more under his belt than one year experience somewhere in a GED.
Okay.
Which goes the same for director of public works and the supervisor of the department.
Public works says high school diploma, GED, post-secondary education or vocational technical education is preferred.
I guess I don't see where the education is going to take the place of experience.
It says right here.
You can read in a book, you can read in a book how to do most anything, but until you've done it. Because every situation, every bridge is going to be different, every culvert's going to be different. There is no school that.
Terry, practical experience is very, it's understandably necessary. However, we are now contracting with an engineer because we and all the years of experience you can combine don't have the ability to do what the engineer can do for us. So that's why we're contracting with someone because he has that education, not because he's going to be out building our bridges for us. And when you look at this where it says bridge crew foreman and it says, basically if I were to look at the minimum experience on here because I wanted to apply for the job, I could have one year working under someone else and a GED. And that to me is not going to be sufficient to come in and tell our employees how to build bridges.
They're not telling our employees. They're supervising the other employees building bridges.
Yes.
The engineer is the one that designs the bridge.
They do, they do that part. We just do the physical and the manual part of it.
You gonna address the college education and the salary part?
Am I going to do what?
Well, I would think someone with a college education is probably going to go a different direction than out working for the county on a bridge crew.
Do we have a bridge crew foreman right now?
Right now, we don't.
We don't?
We don't.
And we haven't built a bridge in?
Well. Well. Not road and bridge, but the, when we say bridge, it's not just a bridge. Sometimes our bridges are more like culverts, the culverts that we put in and whatnot. It's.
If they're under twenty foot, they're a culvert. If they're over twenty foot, they're a bridge.
Then they're called a bridge.
And I guess what you're telling me is you're going to call someone a bridge crew foreman who doesn't know how to direct others to build this or construct this nineteen foot construction?
No, we don't have someone in that capacity right now because we don't, no one on the bridge crew has worked for us for that long. No. No, because it's the most difficult job to hire and maintain staff for. Because it is the most physically demanding, labor intensive, exposure to the weather and the elements. It's the most difficult job to find staff for. It's not highly appealing.
Air condition and it's not heating.
Yep, there's no, yeah, there's no AC out there.
There is today.
Today, there ain't no heat. But, but yeah, it is difficult. It's very difficult to find someone. And I, I agree that maybe one or more years, it says one or more years, you know, okay. Then what is it that we would like to include? And under education, what is?
So under our current, under our current structure then, who assumes the responsibility in this situation?
Bob and Michael. They're overseeing them. And the projects they're doing and the work that's being done. We don't have anyone who's given the title of foreman for.
Since Randy left.
Not since Randy left, no.
So then by your explanation of the qualifications necessary, Bob and Michael should be more than qualified to do any of our structures?
I don't know what you mean by more than qualified to do any of our structures.
They've both been here more than a year and they both have a GED, I assume. At least, at, at a minimum.
Yes.
Okay. So then by, by the explanation that I'm reading in the paperwork of what we are setting forth as a standard, either or both of them should be more than qualified to handle any or multiple projects that we have in a standard.
I don't know what you're.
I have no idea what she's trying to get at.
Do you mean that you're saying you don't think we, we really don't have anyone in the position now? The hope was that eventually we would have someone that would be promotable to be in charge of the bridge crew.
So if the bridge crew foreman in their job description is basically supervising any and all culverts and or bridge construction, which is then an assistant to let's say the supervisor or the public works director because they are initiating all of the paperwork and the contact with the third party, you know, subcontractors or anything like that. Is that not pretty much synonymous with the position that we have as supervisor of the department?
When we had a bridge crew foreman in the past, he took care of the day to day stuff on the bridge. He was an experienced bridge builder. And they did not, Michael and Bob did not do the day to day work on the bridges. He did.
Was, was this position being paid significantly higher than the bridge crew members?
Nope. Significantly, no.
No, not significantly.
No. He wasn't paid, paid significantly more, no.
None of the employees are significantly paid higher than the others.
Do we want to add a statement under education then similar to the other supervisories that some post-secondary education is preferred?
I don't think that. I don't think that corresponds with what, if you're going to keep what we have for the department heads, you know, and the supervisor, then that, I mean, this is right there along those lines.
Well. Public works does say vocational, technical education, post-secondary education or vocational or technical education is preferred. That's what it says on public works. And road and bridge supervisor, it does not. But maybe we could add that to the, it's, it's up to you guys.
Well, basically what I'm hearing is, you know, if we're going to have these requirements, then the pay scale has to compensate. And that's not going to be an option because we continue to pay, you know, ninety percent of a family plan for health insurance and things like that. So we're not going to offer a dollar amount that you're saying, Terry, is going to entice someone that has the education that we would need to actually be overseeing and managing a complex situation like this? I mean, in your experience here of what, almost twenty years, how many bridges have we ever built internally in a year?
We have to, I, we have to ask.
You mean more than one?
When Randy was here, they built bridges constantly. Having spent most of my life in construction, I can tell you that a college degree in built in construction. Maybe if you're going to look for a position as a construction manager or something like that on a project. Otherwise, it's, those guys go up from experience. They don't go up from college. I've been in that business for thirty some years and I can tell you you move up through your experience level. Watch your education.
And your skill level.
Yeah, your skill level. But your skill level should be, go along with your experience.
So what skill level and experience does our current department head supervisory personnel hold that made you promote to such a position of authority? If it depends on that, could, could you elaborate?
I'm not going to talk about an employee.
But you're, you're sitting here saying?
You don't like him and that's fine. I understand that.
There's not a, you don't have to use the word like. I have found multiple problems with the level of efficiency and management skills within that department. And, and we see it constantly because we can't even be given a list of bridges that need worked on. I have to cora request a stack this thick just to know which bridges are insufficient and what needs done to them because the people that are in charge of the department don't even know. So it has not, you don't have to use the word like. That has nothing to do with it. I can be professional. There's, there's an analysis that needs to be done from the top down and it stops here. It doesn't even happen here at the table. That's a problem.
I don't know why you don't have the type of bridge reports. I assume because you weren't here when they came out. But they don't give us a bunch of extras. As far as I know, Michael and Bob get one, the three commissioners get one. And I don't know if they give out any others or not.
But we, we just discussed last, last week how we're about to, to work on a bridge as a priority in the whole county that does nothing more than divert traffic from a state paved road into the country to haul garbage. That has nothing to do with where we receive our revenue for taxes or the level of traffic that is necessary to cross that bridge for, for commerce sake. Not for convenience or for Lincoln to have a radius around it that, that is fixed and, and letting the outskirts crumble away. So to me, what you said about having experience and skill doesn't apply whenever you're putting people in positions that have yet to bring anything to the table. And it does require a little bit of schoolwork, a little bit of homework to be able to give that type of analytical information.
When you brought up that bridge situation last week, you said that there was a bridge with a traffic count of a hundred and thirty five that had a lower sufficiency rating in Bridge One O Five.
Yes.
I went home and I looked through my bridge reports and I cannot find that bridge. There's a bridge with a higher sufficiency rating with a hundred and thirty. But there's not one with a lower sufficiency rating. In fact, on the fracture critical report in two thousand seventeen, Bridge One O Five, the engineer said that the piling and it needed to be replaced and the two stringers repaired as soon as possible.
So then why wouldn't we just shut that bridge down like we do multiple others?
Because it's still a three ton bridge.
What does that have? We've, we've shut down other bridges that are much more useful in, in creating commerce for the county, which generates revenue for our tax reform.
Because, because it was not on the list that had to be repaired or closed. The state says which bridges have to be closed.
The sufficiency rating of the one that we're talking about with an average daily traffic of forty is thirty nine.
Yep. I think the lowest one I found on earth, a hundred and thirty traffic count had a sufficiency rating of forty eight. And if I remember correctly, it has to have a sufficiency rating below fifty to even qualify for matching phones.
Well, there are plenty on here. There's one at the top of this page with an average daily traffic rate at least higher at forty five with a sufficiency rating of forty three right there. It doesn't take rocket science to figure out it's a highly, it's a more highly trafficked bridge with a lower sufficiency rating. There's a hundred and thirty average daily traffic with a forty eight percent sufficiency rating. There's a hundred and sixty average daily traffic rate with fifty four percent. There's a hundred and sixty average daily traffic rate with fifty-four percent-
You understand the sufficiency rating, the higher the number, the better the bridge. The lower the number, the worse the bridge.
Forty-three percent sufficiency is less than fifty percent, which is what you just said it needs to be to qualify for matching funds, less than fifty percent.
But 105 has a sufficiency rating of, I believe, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
And it's also on the fracture-
So the lower the number, the worse the bridge?
Correct.
And also on the frac-
Sorry, I don't look at those.
On the fracture critical report, the engineer said that the piling and the two stringers needed to be taken care of as soon as possible.
Or we can close it. I mean, that's always an option, it seems, for other areas of the county.
If I understand, basically, your question would be then to pose to the Public Works, how do they determine which bridges to put on the list and where? That's great, and I think that will be a good conversation for you guys to have with them. But back to the job description.
Yeah, I didn't see anything else on the job description. If, if that's gonna be, if you're keeping the minimum requirements for education because that's what you've chosen to internally promote, you know, in the past for this position, then that's not gonna change now. Hopefully, when you look for someone, you know, in the future, that that would be more of a consideration.
I believe that typically that position, well, when it was filled from within, promoted from within.
Right, and that was my question to them. If experience and skill is so important, as they say, and none of your educational background matters, then what is the level at which we are functioning now, having promoted with what experience and skill?
I, I don't think that education, I hope it matters and isn't important. Of course it is. But it is difficult for us to hire someone, we're not gonna be able to hire an engineer, you know, to be the bridge performer. I'm sorry, and that's just a re, just a-
We are contracting with an engineer because those services are, are necessary at some point and on some level.
And not a service that we can provide for ourself. We need somebody to help us with that, yes. So is there anything then, or are we pretty well good with these? We're, okay, so, um, I can pick another department and print out for you to take home and that we can look at for next week. Um, is that okay?
Move on.
I will move on to another department. The other thing that came up last week was you guys were talking, kind of veered off onto pre-employment physicals. More of the counties are doing, um, physical capacity testing is what they do. Um, is that something that you guys want some information on?
What does that mean?
Like strength testing. Um, and they, they complete, this is a copy for each of you. This would be something that would be more appropriate. The, on the second page shows you the result of someone who took, took the test. The front one is some information on the website of the company in Salina that does do these, pre-employment tests. I think they said they test up, like, thirty-five, twenty-eight different strength things that they can do. It's based on the job description, um, basically.
So you're saying a strength test or a physical capacity is not a discrimination on their health assessment?
No, this is more, this is in today, today, today's workforce. This is more appropriate. You're not receiving a lot of confidential health information. We're not analyzing it and saying yay or nay. There's no, have to look at it and decide, is that person okay or not okay? They rate the position that the, the employee, the applicant is applying for, and they have to receive that rating or higher, or you know, higher, and that's just that.
Who does something like this?
This company does. They would come out and help to come up with where the level-
Do you have to contract with them, or do you pay per?
Pay per.
Use.
Pay per use. Um, Saline County does it. A lot of other counties are doing it with that company or with other companies that provide the service. She said it's very easy. She said, because they test them and they give you the results. It takes thirty minutes. Ninety-five dollars per employee, per applicant, um, or whoever you test. Um, she said that, like, for them, when they started doing it, they had a couple employees from the department go in to help with the, to test and establish, like, a baseline for where the person should be able to function. And then they kind of started there. And she said they did not test their current staff. They just tested.
New coming.
New. Basically, you make the offer for employment, and they have to complete this, get the, the rating or higher that is required for that position, and then do the pre-employment drug test, and then they're eligible for hire. Um, you offer the job first, and then you do this.
What do we pay currently for, for pre-employment screening? Is it, is it just a drug screening?
We all would do now is a pre-employment drug screen.
What's that cost?
I don't, I'll have to look. I don't wanna give you the wrong figure.
That's not included, ninety-nine dollars.
Uh-uh. No, I'm just wondering, are we doubling our cost for pre-employment? Sixty-five.
I was going to thinking, I wanted to think it went up to seventy. But I can't-
Just out of curiosity, what we're spending now for?
No. They changed their name this year, or middle, late last year. I can't remember what it's called. But we can look that up so they'll give you an accurate number. So yeah, it would be more than double because they're less than a hundred, and this is gonna be about a hundred bucks per person. She said they haven't, like, analyzed all of their jobs. She said that basically what, what they did was, as they opened, because like she said, she'd like her job. But they test every single position for pre-employment with this. Now, when I was visiting with our K-Camp attorney assist, he said that maybe his suggestion would be that if we were going to do this, safety-sensitive, security, physically-labor positions. So basically, public works, law enforcement, EMS. And he said if your health department is still doing in-home client care, still doing homemaking, he would suggest that one as well. Um, but he said maybe not so much for your office staff because there isn't the physical requirements for that position. It would be very, it would be time-consuming to start, but we could. It's something to think about. It's something to consider.
So are they testing whoever, all people that apply?
No. Basically, when you make the conditional offer of employment, when you're offering that applicant the position, you have to offer the job, then they go for the testing.
They go for this testing? So you can make the offer?
Yeah, you have to then.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he said it's, it's, um-
So basically, we agreed to hire, and they do their pre-employment screening, which would be this physical capacity test and their drug screen.
And their drug screen. But yes, you make the conditional offer of employment first because you're not using this result to choose an applicant.
So you take your applicants in, make your choice, and then whoever wants the position and you-
That we-
There's a mutual right agreement, then you-
Yes, like the, like the new EMS person that we offered. When we chose that was our, the person we wanted to hire, we would offer them the position contingent upon the pa, the fact that they complete this and their drug screen successfully, and then it's their job. And if they fail, then we go back to the drawing board.
Do we do exit interviews?
We used to. We haven't. Do I visit with the employees before they leave? Yes, I do. Do I fill out a form and ask a predetermined set of questions anymore? No, because they just, they weren't effective. They weren't, we weren't getting anything useful out of them.
So what, what's a general consensus of what the exit interview would say if you've visited with them?
Usually when they're leaving, I ask them, you know, why they're leaving, you know, where they're going. You know, we go over the changes in their benefits. We go over their capers, returning their equipment, things like that. Some employees come in and we visit. Some, they call me and I talk to them on the phone. Some just don't wanna talk at all and just, send me my check and I'm done.
No one's ever expressed their disgruntlement and what the, what the cause of their choice to leave is?
That's kind of assuming that all employees leave because they're disgruntled. Not all employees leave because of disgruntlement. I mean, most of our employees have left, as of late, the ones that, the things they've told me, perhaps they've told someone else. Most of them, it's pay, benefits, relocation. Like one of the guys in the highway department, his girlfriend lived in Topeka. One of them needed to move. You know, there was no disgruntlement with that. Some, because of position closer to home, opened up where they could make the same equivalent or more money and drive less. One got offered his job that he retired back at significantly higher pay. One of them left because they felt like there was more room for advancement someplace else. Um, one left because he said that he felt like he would use his skills, his education, more someplace else. I mean, all sorts of number of reasons.
And you said the, the least retained position is bridge crew?
The bridge crew is the hardest one because it is very physically demanding. A lot of employees will hire, will hire someone and they'll start there, and then they wanna move someplace else.
We increased the bridge crew pay by a dollar an hour to try to get them to stay on the bridge crew.
Yeah, we did, and it's helped some. It has. I have somebody that actually transferred to that position, and they're very happy there, and I think that that's terrific. And, but I have one that's there that I know that would love to do something else. But they're doing a good job where they are, and if something else opens, you know, we'll address it then. And I'm not saying that we should do this. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, but it's something to think about. You guys were having, we had the conversation last week. It gives you something to think about?
It's a better option than a doctor's.
It is. We're not analyzing their health information and determining anything. Somebody else is just giving them, and it's cut and dry, and I like that. Um, and if you look at the, like, the results that they received, another thing that's nice about this that they do, um, if you see that this applicant that applied for a job with Saline County, they know that this employee, this, this employee has a ten percent impairment on certain areas. So let's say this employee had an on-the-job injury. They already know that where their level of impairment was prior as they're trying to get them back to full capacity. And it kind of will help with some of those things. But you're not receiving an excess of unnecessary or unneeded health information about the person, which would be better. But it, you know, I'm not gonna lie, it's expensive, you know? And I don't know if the intention would be to do the staff we have now or just pre-employment. Marilyn said that in Saline County, they just do pre-employment. She said they don't have anything or a policy that you redo it every so many years. She said so it's what you choose and what you do. It could be helpful.
I think it's a good place to start for the highway department, just because it is physically demanding.
If we were to do this, we are not going to be, we shouldn't be targeting one department. He said if we do it, you have a policy and you identify which areas. And if we do it, it would be unfair to only target that position.
Well, essentially, it's targeting. I mean, we haven't had any employee turnover in the other departments. I mean, I guess we could do, we could do EMS.
His suggestion was law enforcement, EMS, Public Works. And the health department doesn't see clients in their home, and they don't do home maker services, or we would have suggested them as well. So if we did, then we shouldn't just target the one department. We would want to, and to be honest, the, the sheriff's department is trying to hire staff, and we would want to hire the best staff, so it would be something to implement there as well. And probably with EMS, and it would be, we'd be being consistent with how we were treating departments. And if we're only doing pre-employment, then that would help. And it wouldn't be such an exorbitant cost if we're just doing pre-employment. You know, Mike's gonna want the best people, you know, to work as a deputy and to work in the jail, so this could be beneficial as well. That would just be my suggestion, that if we were going to look into doing it. And I spoke with somebody from the company, and they said if we had any interest, they could come out. They could provide some more information. They could meet with you guys, give you guys some more information. Something to look at.
I think we should do that.
Okay, I can contact them. I didn't want them to come out if we weren't interested. That doesn't mean you have to say yes. It doesn't mean we have to go with it, but it would be something to at least maybe listen to what they have to say.
I believe that would be important.
Is this Salina? Is this a Salina?
This place is in Salina. If I, I was reading on the website, and there was a, um, I think you, like, an orthopedic specialist that started the company and whatnot. And they have a branch, I believe, it's like in Junction City as well. So basically, we would make a conditional offer of employment, and the applicant would have to go to Salina and have this done. They said it takes about thirty minutes. And she said there's a quick turnaround with the results of the report. And she said that she tells applicants to give a hundred percent so that if, um, we hired somebody, um, her example was for them in the jail. She said we hire somebody and they wanna be a corrections officer. So they test for that, and she said if they, if they test to their maximum capacity, then when they want a promotion to another position that has a higher rating, they don't have to retest. And she said they offer applicants the opportunity to retest at their own cost. So if I went in and I took the test, and for this position I had to get a four-point-oh, if I came back with a, like, a three-point-eight, I might be willing to pay the ninety-five bucks and get it done again to get that four, if I really thought that I could do that. And she said that she talks to applicants about that so that they understand what they're doing, why they're doing it, and they need to do their best. I can try to schedule something for them to come out. Probably not next week, but, you know, in a couple of weeks. Okay. Anything else?
Um, back-
Back to-
Back to the office manager position.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, um, under functions, one of the things it says is-
Essential or marginal?
Uh, under marginal.
Okay.
Let me look at essential here for a minute. Okay, so under essential function, it says assigns daily work assignments in the absence of Director of Public Works and Road and Bridge Supervisor to all subordinate department employees as directed. And then under marginal functions, it says assists with maintaining special projects lists. I'm wondering what that means.
I can-
I mean, I under, I'm sorry, let me, let me rephrase. The first one, I understand what that means, assigns daily work assignments in the absence of Director of Public Works. Um, so basically, what, what you're trying to say is-
She tries to help, she helps to make sure that the department functions efficiently.
She'll let them know what was on the plan.
Yes, the plan, yes.
In other words, okay. This is where I'm going with this. And then under marginal functions, it says assists with maintaining special projects list. So here's my question. Where is the master list? You know, nothing in here, in the, under office manager, nothing under Director of Public Works, nothing under Bridge, Road and Bridge Supervisor, has anything about a project list. So this, this maintaining special projects list line item is interesting to me. I'm wondering where, where are we with making sure there is a list at all?
I can ask Michael about that.
Yeah.
I'll ask Michael.
Yeah, I mean, I've asked in meetings all year.
I know, I said special projects, but she would be-
I'm not sure. I'll call and I'll ask.
To call in with, with places, you know, if they've got a plug, culvert, or a place in the road they think needs fixed.
I think that's up here. She serves as primary contact for the department, answering incoming radio and telephone calls.
Yes.
Unless it would be like the bridges and stuff that are-
I will call down, and I will ask and find out what that is about, what that means, and who has that list.
The, the complaint, um, form.
Which one?
It's not on here.
Okay.
But that's one thing. I think we had created an actual- But that's one thing. I think we had created an actual form to be filled out when someone does call in and say, you know, "I have a hole in my road," or-
Whatever the complaint might be.
My window is three feet high, whatever that is. There is, she, I know she was just making notes, I think probably just on like a call pad, like so-and-so called, and she was keeping those. And then they created an actual form for the, for the complaint itself. And I would say that maybe should be addressed. And it, and it can be, you know, some of these others could be combined if you didn't want to go more than the one page.
I try not to because then it just gets-
This special projects list is interesting to me because we don't have any, we don't have any mention of creating or maintaining a list of ongoing projects for the other management positions. And I think that is definitely an essential function. It should probably be the top function for any administrative position, regardless of your skill or experience level. If you can't create a list and explain what's on that list and why, then you're deficient in your job.
Special projects could be left over from the days of the five-year bridge plan too, where they had a constant flow of special projects.
They had had another position that they eliminated.
They had a full-time secretary and then they had a special projects.
They had. I was thinking Mahalun. Jeff.
Oh, he was, um-
What was he?
They had a bridge foreman and a project foreman.
And that could be left over from that as well. We will, we will look into that. I will ask what that is, where that's maintained, whether that should be on the other-
You can probably take under essential functions, bullet point three and four, and combine those.
Okay.
And that's spelled wrong. Completing has an M in it instead of an N. If you look under bullet point four.
I, I see that. Thank you. It's amazing how many times you spell check them and look at them and they're still. Okay. Sorry, I took a little bit more than 30 minutes. No, this is good.
Again, under problem solving, it has, "Problems this employee may encounter include dealing with the equipment malfunctions, adverse weather, prioritizing projects, and dealing with public concerns regarding road and bridge operations." So again, under prioritizing projects, we touch on this several times, especially in this position. But again, in those administrative positions, the public, director of public works, bridge and road supervisor, and office manager, there, there needs to be something, and I would say as the primary bullet point under essential functions, to create and establish a working list. You know, projects completed, projects in progress, and-
Because it does say on director of, of public works prioritizing projects, dealing with that, it's on there too. It's on that one too.
Right, yes. It's, we're beating around the bush on it with, with all of these, but there is no list.
Okay, so you would like on director of public works to maybe take a look at adding a bullet under essential?
That it would be director of public works and road and bridge.
Right, okay.
And hers is somewhat on here, but I would say from marginal functions, it should jump up under, you know, if she's going to be taking on their role in their absence and then under problem solving, doing the prioritizing herself, then I, I think that should be up there.
Okay. So I will move, well, we'll find out what this special project list is and then move it up to essential.
Well, yeah, and I don't think it necessarily has to be special if they're saying that was something particular.
We'll, we'll, we'll see what that's about. Okay.
It should just be in general, the, the list of completed, ongoing, and future projects. For example, I mean, here we are in January, talking about this bridge west of town. We haven't talked about any other bridges or what the associated cost factor is, the comparison, you know, financially or budgetarily, what is, basically, when I ask how this department does their budget, the response is, "Well, we do it based on last year." That is the antithesis of how you do a budget. The way you do a budget is you project what you want to accomplish in your goals and you set the numbers according to what you want to do there. So if, if that list requirement under those three administrative positions is basically similar to all of them and they're all working from the same list, then you can better formulate-
I think they do some of that. They may not explain very well sometimes what they do. But I do know that they take what they spent the year before, what they spent the current year, and they look at what they need, what they want, what they'd like to do.
I've, Cora requested for, for a priority list of bridges and there isn't one, just so you know. There isn't one.
I think they go off, don't they go off that, that you get from?
This is just a report, an inspection report.
I thought they used that. Okay.
Well, it gives every, it's every bridge and then all of its descriptive statistics. But it's not created by us. This is just the inspection report by number and by bridge number and the other characteristics of the bridges. That also has "and" spelled wrong in that same bullet point.
Which one are we on?
Number four, essential functions under office manager, just so you know.
Thank you.
Another "M" in there.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'll pick another department and I will print for Aljo. Terry, do you want me to print or you print it for you? And how about you?
Email.
Email is good for you. Okay, well, I'll just pick another department and I will get that for you.
Thank you so much.
Straight on.
Okay, so we talked about the gravel pricing up next. Where is that? I emailed each of you guys the gravel agreement. Apparently, in years past, whenever we've increased the price, we've sent out new agreements to ask them to be modified. So I had asked Michael to have, we were going to take the time to do it, to maybe have Jennifer look at it and put some kind of clause that if we gave an increase, that they would automatically receive it rather than having to have a new agreement. And so this one's just like a sample, so kind of ignore the name part. It's probably correct. But it kind of gives you a sample of it. I really don't know what else has been changed besides that. And then I think that he told me that they give them a little bit longer than 120 days to get out of the pit if they don't want to renew. So anyways, I guess, since you guys increased the price, they'll have to send these out to all of the pit owners to have new gravel agreements done. Or at least that has been the practice in the past.
I don't see anything in here about the situations that we're facing where we have let these agreements expire with our invested cost of extracting the gravel and piling it and then not actually removing it from the property.
I think that's why they gave six months rather than 120 days. I think that's number six. I'm not 100% sure, but just to bring up an effective date until six months after.
That has changed. It wasn't six months before.
Yeah, it was 120 days before, which is, is that three months?
Three months is 90 days, so.
Four months.
Four months, okay. I think it was 120 days before. And I meant to grab one of the old ones so that we could look at it side by side. I can go grab one of them.
So what, what is our typical, is it for two years?
It's up to the landowner. One, two, or three years. They would prefer to have three years, but it's up to the individual landowner. So there's a couple that do it every single year. The other thing that Michael had talked about maybe wanting to try to do is to get these to fall on the calendar year. So they all expire at the same time, so they all-
We know it's happening.
Yeah.
I would say, though, this line, the, under section one, it says, "This agreement shall terminate on," and then you put the date. Then it says, "In addition, the buyer shall have the option to extend the terms of this agreement for an additional two-year period." Why do we have to put a numeral there? I, maybe we should just put-
I think that's what he put because he liked to do a minimum of two years and not the one-year agreements, to get away from the one-year agreements. That, I think, might be new. Let me go grab.
I mean, I think we, it would behoove us to just say, "In addition, the buyer shall have the option to extend the terms of this agreement, period." I wouldn't put for a period of time. Then you set the period of time with the renewal. Because the way this is worded, we have, they, they or we both have the option to extend for an additional two-year period. It doesn't mean that you, they will anyhow, so. And I would say if they're not willing to do two years, but we need more time there and they're willing to do one, we do it regardless. I mean, it might not be ideal, but. "The option shall be, shall be exercised by the buyer, delivering to the seller a written notice of buyer's election not less than 90 days prior to the expiration of the primary term." Buyer shall have six months after the end of the extended term in which to remove any stockpiled materials. Maybe that should say, "Buyer shall have six months after the end of the agreement or extended term." Because the way that reads, it doesn't necessarily say that you have six months if you, if the landowner chooses not to renew. It's saying that we have six months after the end of the extended term. If they don't choose the extended term, it's not really addressing that, if you want to just get picky with words. If you just add it in there at the end of the agreement and/or extended term.
I would agree with that.
How many of these lease crews are in Saline County?
Thirteen, I believe. And I don't know why I believe that, but I believe thirteen.
I think twelve and then we had a new one, so.
Got any gravel?
I would agree, Dawn. I think they all need to come do it first year. Stop this massive habit of trying to, trying to get everything. I mean, that, we lose track of them. We're having one in March and you have one in maybe June and nobody's, that's, if we had them all do it-
At the end of the calendar year.
No matter when they sign it, just have it expire at, yeah, at the end of the year.
Or maybe, maybe we would rather do it amid you. So, because the end of the year is always so crowded with everything. Maybe it'd be good to start them in June, June or July first.
Give you a better chance to get out there physically to measure them in the weather.
Stuff in July, so.
Yeah. So, do you want to say June 30th?
Yes.
And then we'll just include that in the letter? Would that be okay to include that in the letter that will, whatever their calendar year that they are set to expire, we'll set the new expiration to June 30th?
Sign one, right?
Yes.
You know, so I-
And I think, right.
Yeah, I would explain to-
I guess I, yeah, I think the letter could say, and I think the first expiration, expiration date should be June of 2019. There is no sense in having them come do it in 18.
Or if they want to go longer.
So there'd be 18 months there.
Okay, so anything that was expiring in 18 to put June 30th and 19 on the, us fill that in. See, and that's the thing.
Given the option of three or two or three year.
They, they let them fill that in. And so I think sometimes people don't know what to write there. And probably what they should say is leave that blank and tell us how many years you want.
Just put, put, "This agreement shall terminate on June 30th," and they can fill in the year.
Yeah.
Because if they choose next year, then they just put in a year and they can, up to, I mean, I don't know what-
If they want to do a three year.
Have we put a maximum on it of three years?
No, that's just-
I guess the other, the other thing that I-
I don't think we've ever done that.
Feel is important is that, I'm not sure that this shouldn't be done in person. That they should be, go out to the landowner or the renter, whoever they're dealing with. I know the one in Barnard, they deal with the renter. They don't deal with the landlord. He, then he tells the landlord and encourage, but I think a, a personal communication because we won't, we got into that problem with the one that expired because, number one, the letter was being sent. It was going back and forth because of the wrong address. But if we would have made a personal visit, I guess is what I'm saying. I, I still think that that's important to-
Well, there's the two that are out of state.
Yeah, I know. Those, those are, you know, yeah, yeah. But yeah, I, I think a phone call would be appropriate, you know, and say, "Hey, this is, we're sending this. This is what we expect, or this is what we want." To make sure that, you know, because it's real easy just to ignore something that comes in the mail that you're not interested in. And we need a communication, yes or no.
Are you guys okay with the addition that we wouldn't have to renew these every time of price increases?
Yes, I think.
Other than that, I don't. Did you see anything else?
Is summertime known to be harvest time?
That might be the better time, the end of June, because there will be people off. So there'll be people off and we don't tend to work. They're, they're not out grading roads and doing things because of the harvest, so that might be the better time.
But your landowners are going to be cutting rate too.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe the first of May would be better.
Okay, when does normal farm rentals go? Should we do like a farm rental rate where they're used to? Is that August 1st?
Well, most of those leases are March 1st, isn't it, Howard? When those, you have to give notice 30 days prior to March 1st. So that's basically when all that is happening.
We have to give notice 90 days prior.
Twenty-nines in January, you have to notify.
Yeah. Would that be better to follow along? I know these people own their, their land, but they, you know, if they lease some too, it might-
I think March might be a better time because people aren't quite as busy.
It might be.
Does that give us our 90 days? What's our 90 in January, February, March? So what about April 1st?
That's fine. April 1st is fine too.
That gives us, then we don't have to use the month of January. It's, we don't, in other words, we don't have to send out our notices January 1st or 2nd. We could do it February 1st. Does that make sense, Dawn? 90 days prior to April 1st would be February.
So they'd actually expire March 30th.
March, April. No, sorry. February, March, and April.
Yeah.
No, that's-
Get in, end of April, first of May, and it starts getting busier.
All of January, all of February, all of March. Now, if you send it up every Thursday.
But we would, but we have to, we have to give, so we'd have to really give notice the end of the year, is what we would have to do. That's okay. That might even be better for us. If we get it done before the end of the year, then they have it those three months. And then we have six months from then, so we will have until about harvest to get the rest of our gravel. If we're, if they're not resigning, which gives us into the summer. If we're, if they're not resigning, which gives us into the summertime, good weather to get it out of there. So, March thirty-first?
March thirty-first is what I have.
Oh, okay.
With a blank mark.
Yeah, for the year.
We'll just explain to all of them. Whatever year it was that they chose to re, not, we, originally chose to expire in will be the year that, except for twenty eighteen, no, or we go twenty nineteen. Okay, I think there's at least two, I think, that is on an annual basis, if not three, so. Was there any other?
I like, you know, have them all at the same time would benefit all of us. They don't flip through the cracks, and they don't.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, this was the other thing I wanted to talk to you about last week, but everything got heated, so I didn't. The lot to the north of the recycling center, Don pans or owns, and he's not well, so his son came and they're, you know, working on cleaning up things, and they would like to offer it to us to purchase. And he said the lot right now is valued at thirteen hundred dollars, and it has a trailer house on it. And they would be willing to make us whatever, a, a good deal that we would like to offer if we would like to purchase that lot. I have no idea if that's your desire or not your desire. Right now, we kind of own, and there's a lot here. We travel on that lot, or we used to travel more when they were hauling, when we were hauling recycling to Salina, but right now CB Trucking is picking up all of our recycling, so I don't really know how they get in and get out. I don't know if they back in there.
They park on, I think they park on the street. They take it around to the skid loader, I believe.
I say, I haven't been down there for a long time. I know the little loop, there's, it's not big enough for a.
Truck.
Truck to turn around in. So that is out there. He said if he wanted to make a, a offer, they would be willing to let it go. They just.
They want to sell it with the old trailer on it?
That's what it sounded like, yeah.
Is it movable?
Yeah.
I think it's not in good shape.
It needs demolished?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
It's been vacant for twenty-five, thirty years, a little bit smaller.
Is it, is the lot right on the street?
Yeah.
Right on the corner, yeah.
And you guys can think about it, and.
I was going to drive down there and I forgot.
Yeah, I think it would, it's, it's something we might be interested in.
So.
We're kind of hemmed in there the way we are. It's, it's pretty tight.
Well, you can kind of see, if you go down and look, you can kind of see where the guys travel with their trucks they park.
It'd just be right south of them.
So, okay. And the next few things are probably going to make you feel uncomfortable, because they make me feel uncomfortable, that I just feel like we need to address them. A couple of weeks ago, there was a comment that Michael O'Hare is somehow related to someone from Kirkham Michael. I contacted Kirkham Michael, number one, to talk about number two. I probably should have listed that first, but I just threw it out there. Are, is, is he somehow related to somebody? Is, is Michael or Jennifer somehow related or tied into Kirkham Michael? And he is unaware of any connection that he knows of. Then I asked him about the daily traffic count, because, you know, I don't like to say things that I don't know or the truth, and I, I know what I have heard in the past, is that's an estimate. And again, I spoke with Tanner Yost, and he related that the daily traffic count is an estimate only for the bridges that are not located on RS routes. And he said the RS routes are completed by the state of Kansas, he believes, every five years. So those numbers are actually gone and pulled from the state. And I started to pull today that map, but you can go to KDOT's website and find those routes that they, they monitor or traffic count.
On whose website?
On KDOT's. And I can tell you how to get there, because I kind of wrote some sticky notes. But anyways, I started to print that off, and I think that we get a, a map every, I may even have a map in my file, because I think we get a map every time they do that. And he said they tend to just put a counter at the end where it exits on and off of the highway, not necessarily further down the road. He said, he's not a hundred percent sure exactly where the markers are put at. But he said that the scope of work currently does not include traffic counters and related, that if we want actual count for each bridge, that it's possible, but we would need to include it as the scope of work, and that it would increase the price per bridge inspection. As far as estimates go, he said that they realize, that they utilize the estimates that were done previously. And if, if while they're there inspecting the bridge, they notice more of a volume than what was expected, then they assess, assess with the county if the daily traffic count should be adjusted. So he said basically, like, if he's under the bridge and the count of it, of the bridge is like forty, and ten vehicles travel that road while they're under the bridge, then they would say, "Ooh, that's a little low." But if they only have one, if any vehicle travel while they're there inspecting, then they just use the estimates that came from previous inspectors. And Kirkham Michael had inspected us before, Schwab Eaton had inspected us before, so it's hard telling which one.
Well, and that's been so many years, that a lot of these are probably lower.
Potentially.
I mean, we don't have the population we had ten years ago.
The vast majority are forty or below on the estimates.
So. Okay, so that ends that. So basically, if nobody comes over, then they, while they're inspecting, then they kind of tend to leave it and, and honor that estimate. He said the other option is you can pay employee to sit out there. You know, if you think that higher traffic volume is during the daytime, you can pay somebody to sit out there and count.
It's going to vary from days, it's going to vary from weather, it's going to vary from.
Everything, yeah.
I don't know what it costs to bike counter.
I don't know.
Could just use a trail cam.
True.
You should snap a picture every time, and then you could just count, you know, on the computer, like.
To get an actor to count, you'd have to do it like over a month or something, to get a, or near an actor.
Well, we don't have to do it to them all. I think we, what we would do is we would take the top five bridges that we're looking at, you know, based on location and need for them, you know, commerce-generated revenue, income-based, and the size of them and the capacity at which we think we can do one or two of those, and then give a comparative analysis by doing that. I think that would be the best way.
A lot of the bridges, the need repaired would be used considerably more if they were replaced, because they're three- or four-tonne bridges, they can't take a farm truck across them, or a semi. Or if it was a, if the bridge was redone, there'd probably be a lot more traffic over it, but, because, you know, they're going around them now with the semis.
Very true.
Well, and there is a big difference, like you're saying, for farming. I mean, if someone has to drive to work and go around to get to work, because they work somewhere, that's one thing. But if you're hauling and you're making three extra miles both ways of a trip, that's, you know, six miles every trip for every, every load, load of grain.
Okay, so my third thing, the comment last week, the thing handbook was suspended prior to promoting Michael, and then reinstated after the hire. I cannot find any record of anything being changed in the handbook regarding Michael's hire or fire, or hire or promotion. I'm wondering, because it happened in the same year, if what you're speaking about was actually in the ambulance department when we hired the new director. And her husband was a paramedic, and they wanted to be able to hire him as paramedic, because we need paramedics in our community, is my understanding of the dealings.
Part-time.
So they changed the handbook.
You didn't find that in the minutes?
The, about the ambulance. I didn't find anything about Michael O'Hare.
No, you didn't find the suspension of the handbook clause on nepotism?
I'm talking about in the accusation that Michael O'Hare, that it was suspended with Michael O'Hare. It was not suspended with Michael O'Hare.
Okay, first of all, Dawn, a question is not an accusation, and I have every right to sit here and question whatever I want. In fact, that's what I get paid for, and that's what people voted me in to do. So just because I question things and you say that it makes you uncomfortable, that's too bad, so sad. I will question.
It makes me uncomfortable to address you, because this is the reaction that I get when I'm trying to talk to you, is, is you get upset.
No, you're using what's like accusation, and what I'm telling you is that questioning something is not the same thing.
When you questioned about the hiring and/or promotion of Michael O'Hare, there was no suspension of the handbook when we promoted him.
But you're saying you didn't find the suspension of the handbook clause in the minutes?
No, I'm saying when we hired Michael O'Hare, the suspension of the nepotism clause occurred when we hired the ambulance director, and not the current ambulance director. There is a difference, because you specifically said the road and bridge department. So that's what I am telling you.
Yes, I questioned it.
Is, is I could not find anything in the handbook regarding the road and bridge department. A, as far as the suspension of a clause, and there was no suspension of the clause. They changed the handbook, and then they changed it back. So I would say that they changed the handbook and they changed it back, and it had everything to do with the ambulance director and absolutely nothing to do with the road and bridge department.
So what did they change?
They allowed a supervisor to supervise or being in charge of the, a family member. I honestly don't know what the word is, otherwise, but.
I didn't explain it. I found it and I put it on the calendar. You may go get it?
Yeah, if you don't want to.
Oh, don't worry about it.
And I think the stipulation had, was that they were part-time, and that they were non-benefit eligible.
And both of those people left?
Yes.
And that's when it got changed back?
Yes. It probably should have never been changed to begin with, but that's a board's decision. That's not my decision.
At the time, we were doing a lot of transfer of that hospital that required paramedics. And we had the opportunity to have one part, part-time, to do transfers and take backups and stuff like that, was what the deal was.
What year was that?
She'll bring it down. I found it. Would you like me to read it? Okay, it's from September eighth of two thousand and fifteen. And the minutes read, after discussion, the board determined that due to the need for additional paramedics within the county, that they would like to consider amending the current policy to allow employment of relatives on a part-time basis no, no more than a thousand hours per year. Because previously, our employment of relatives policy, you couldn't supervise relatives. And we changed it for EMS, where they could hire a relative on a part-time basis. And we did that in September of fifteen. And then we changed it back and rescinded that motion. February first of two thousand and sixteen. Aljo moved to rescind the action taken on, because they took the actual action on the twenty-first of fifteen, which amended the Lincoln County Handbook Employment of Relatives section and rescinded the policy as written in the Lincoln County Employee Handbook adopted March first of two thousand and twelve. So he rescinded at that.
I moved to rescind. I didn't do it myself.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. If that helps.
You said the discussion was on the eighth, but the action was on the twenty-first?
Yeah, I think that's what I read, yes. And she's right, because I remember that those conversations clearly, and the discussion was regarding EMS, and it was regarding the need to have more paramedics. How do we have a car-carrying paramedic in our county, and by God, they can't work for us, we need them? And, and it was, we tried, and it just didn't work out. But it didn't have anything to do with road and bridge.
Okay, this is where I'm very uncomfortable, but. The constant disagreement with the county attorney, obviously something is not working. And I guess I have some questions for you. But the constant conflict regarding the subject is, is not working.
Are you talking about KSA seventy-five, forty-three oh one A and seventy-five, forty-three oh four?
Asking for the attorney general's opinion, et cetera. My question is, is do you guys agree that the county attorney needs staff?
Yes.
Can, can you as a board agree that they need staff?
Yes.
Okay. It was proposed to hire employees for the department rather than pay at a contractual rate. Why is this not an acceptable resolution? Every, every other department has employees. Why is this not? And I'm, I'm putting you guys, all of you, on the spot. Why is it not an acceptable resolution? And just, like, throw out your feelings, and I'm going to write them down.
I think it is a, a solution to the impasse that we have come to. The, one of the problems is that we do not have the staff in the courthouse. They were, or we will have to establish a, an office in the courthouse. I guess my concern, one of my concerns is that this person doing private law practice work, which could happen. My other concern is budgetary, strictly budgetary. We would have to supply a employee benefits. And the price, I guess, of the cost of a legal type, type of legal secretary to do that kind of work is going to be expensive. And there may have to be some salary adjustments to other clerical help in this courthouse if we do that. Those are my, those are my concerns. I think we're going to see an increase in budget if, if we go that route. We are presently hiring a county attorney, basically full-time, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which county attorney, or attorneys are earning hundred to two hundred dollars an hour, so we're basically paying for a thousand dollars an hour in this county. A thousand, I mean, a hundred and twenty, twelve hundred and, twelve hundred and what, fifty hours? We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Budget.
Budget.
For the entire department.
Yeah, for the entire, and if you take it by a hundred dollars, there's twelve fifty. You take it by two hundred, there's about six hundred and seventy-five hours. The county attorney's a full-time job. So, to me, I think we're probably getting a pretty good deal. Because we're going to have to pay, if we were going out and hired, we're going to pay anywhere from a hundred to, well, the one at North Central Kansas, a juvenile detention center, we pay two hundred dollars an hour for his work, plus mileage, plus we pay a retainer fee, which is about ten thousand a year. So, you know, I, to me, I, I think we're probably saving the county money this way. But I can, I don't have any problem hiring a legal secretary to, to work for the county attorney. But I just tell you, we're going to, we're going to be spending more money.
I think some of the neighboring counties pay the employee, but they don't have an office. They're, they're paying, they work inside the law firm. I think Mitchell County's that way. Doc, I think they have maybe two and a half paid employees, I'm not sure.
Would it be helpful if I contacted or sent on a WAM, tried to formulate some questions to ask some counties to see what they're doing? I know we're not the only county that does this, this way. We may be the only county that is contracting with the county attorney's actual law firm that, that they're not shared partners in, but we're not the only county that is contracting with a law firm to provide the service. So my question is, is would that be helpful to know? How many counties do, how much they pay, what, what they pay for? If they rent outside of the courthouse, or if they have offices in the courthouse, how they handle the employees? You know, one of the things that I thought of, and I get where, where you think that the, that the employee will be doing private law, because I'll be honest, I have that same opinion. I did talk to with Judge Grace one day. I did talk to with Judge Grace one day outside, just visiting with him. He used to be the Republic County Attorney. And I said, how was it when you were there? And he said, well, they, I think he, if I remember right, he told me that they contracted and then they did start paying the employee. And they had one full-time and one part-time, and he said, the hours counteracted themselves. Where one may have went, like if his full-time secretary may have done thirty hours of private work this week and ten hours, or thirty hours of county work and ten hours of private work this week, the part-time employee might have done more hours of county work than what they were being billed for. And so he said it kinda all washed out in the wash. And, and so that kinda changed my opinion just a little bit on it. But I guess, obviously, you have an issue with us paying O'Hare Law. Is, you know, she proposed to go to a full-time or put the employees on, on county payroll.
Okay.
I, and I just, let me, let me just finish. Like I said, it's difficult and probably what you're hearing me say is not what I'm intending for it to say. But I just feel like we're at an impasse and this, this just needs to stop. And I don't know how to, how to get it to stop because you guys aren't going to ask for an Attorney General's opinion and you're probably not gonna stop asking for an Attorney General's opinion. And I guess to me, you know, she offered up a solution about making them county employees. What is the, I guess, what is the real problem with making them county employees? They probably should have been on the law. I know why that they weren't. She's now provided you with an Attorney General's opinion that says that elected officials don't have to abide by the nepotism rules of the county. So maybe the fact that Katie is her sister is not as important. I don't, I don't know. Regardless of however it happens, if Jennifer is not our county attorney or whoever might be our county attorney the next time around or in eight years or whenever they, they renew, the employees of the county attorney's office serve at the sole whim of the county attorney. The same as the clerks serve, the clerks in my office serve at the sole whim of me. So if I'm not elected next election and somebody else comes in, they can fire my staff and appoint new people. And there have been counties that have done that. I think that's incredibly insane to do that because with that, you lose knowledge and you lose, you know, history. However, I can understand sometimes that's what people choose to do. That's their choices. But regardless of whether they're a county employee or not, that's still going to be the same, that if you make them a county employee, they can be terminated on the spot the minute somebody else takes over. And I don't know if that was some of the protection before. I, I, I don't know. But I guess I wondered if, if I got some information from some of the other counties, would that be beneficial to you guys or not beneficial to you guys? Or are we just gonna continue to have an impasse every, every time?
No, I think information would be beneficial. I don't think there's any doubt about that.
Am I wasting my time?
No, if, if you're really wanting an answer, you as an elected official can seek an Attorney General opinion on your own. You don't need, you as a county clerk can seek an Attorney General opinion without the board.
I'm not going to do that.
Well, I think no one here wants to do that because we all know the answer. And the realization is what we are doing is improper. Now, if you just wanna get, then why are you so afraid to seek Attorney General opinion?
Because I think it's wasting their time.
It's not a waste of time. It's an absolutely legitimate request to know if an elected official is allowed to contract with their own personal business. If I did it, it would be the first thing on everybody's minds in this room.
Let me ask this question. If I survey a hundred and five counties and fifty counties do exactly like we do it, then are you going to go to those fifty counties and say, you're doing this illegally and we need to request an Attorney General's opinion?
No, that's why you, that's why you request the Attorney General's opinion because when they issue that opinion, people go, oh, we're doing this wrong. Let's, let's make it legitimate. Because the whole concept is you cannot produce favoritism. And the comment wasn't, were the O'Hares related to Kirkman Michael? It's, I said, if it's your buddy and you just wanna shovel them business and funnel it right to them, obviously, that's what you can do. And that's, that's a position and a power that we should not be abusing with government money. Just so everyone knows, this isn't our money. We can't, Dawn, you said it yourself. You told me you've worked here so long, you take ownership over things. This has been happening in this county for a long, long time. Now, on one hand, it's nice that you have dedicated people who wanna be in the field because it is sometimes thankless. On the other hand, it's not our money. It is public money. And we are required to have due diligence to do things out in the open the right way. Just as the county attorney has made remarks in this room saying, well, now, nothing can be done without everybody knowing about it because there's a camera in the room. I have had tens of thousands of thanks over that. And it was interesting that the mediator that we hired, that was suggested by our county attorney, knew that the camera belonged to me. I hadn't met the man before in my life, not once.
When he asked who it belonged to, I pointed at you.
No, he said, is that your camera? It was exactly what he said.
First he said, whose camera is that? And I pointed at you.
Well, if you informed him, then fine. But it is interesting that he was so worried about it and it's a public meeting and it's perfectly acceptable. In fact, there are other counties now doing the same thing because we are not the only ones, just like as you suggested. Maybe half of the counties, maybe all the counties are doing it improperly. That doesn't make it right. And it's just like, Dawn, if you wanted to contract and, and you happen to own a Dunkin' Donuts and you wanted to contract Dunkin' Donuts for your office every week, it's illegal. You can't do it, just as I can't contract for my personal business to the county, for, for county money and payments. So if we wanna make it legitimate, we need itemized receipts. We don't know how much the rent costs at our satellite location. We don't know how much the salaries are. We don't know any of those things because there's a, there's a repeat payment for the exact dollar amount every month. And there have never been itemized receipts. Now, when you go back and look at the previous contract, there are receipts prior to.
No, they're not, there's not receipts. It's the same invoice.
There are receipts on, there were receipts on there for stamps and for postage and things like that.
That's not a receipt, though. That's just, that's just invoicing you for that cost. It's not a receipt. A receipt would be the post office giving you a receipt and you stapled it to it.
An invoice, an itemized, itemized invoice, itemized receipt. It's, it's a breakdown.
The clerical staff, still clerical staff? It didn't have how many hours and what the payday rate was? Didn't, didn't the clerical staff say clerical staff?
It, it did, but if that bid was negotiated by the partner of the firm and not the actual acting attorney, then that's legal. So it either has to be negotiated by the partner of the, of the firm or it needs to be let for bid. As far as any other law firm could provide those services to the county if it's let for bid. Or the, or the partner of the firm can come and negotiate the contract, then you sign a contract. Or you don't have a contract at all, like we don't. And then you get itemized receipts or itemized, what did you call it?
Okay.
Invoices.
For a county councilor probably, but not for a county attorney.
No, that's exactly what KSA, that's exactly what the statute says.
I don't agree with letting a bid for clerical staff, but if this would solve the, the conflict, would you be game for, for bidding out clerical staff?
I'm game for seeing a receipt because what I see out of the budget.
For the elected county attorney's office.
That's what it says in the statute, if you've ever read it, which apparently you haven't even though I've brought it up twenty-five times. But what I'm saying is you can have an itemized receipt that shows this is how much the rent is. Probably. And that just shows how little you've actually done your research. But it, it says.
I researched it. I read the Attorney General opinions you brought in. They all had to do with county commissioners selling to themselves.
Which is still an elected official. It's an elected official period. But if you get an itemized receipt, then you know how much the rent is. Are we paying half or are we paying three-quarters? You know, I see that we pay the full contract for the copying machine in that office. I was told that there is one machine that's used for copy and fax in that office. That means we're paying a hundred percent of the cost for something that's being used, like Mr. Aljo Wallace just said, that's being used for a private business's.
Okay, now that, that's, that's an assumption. Because could they not have printers too? Like I have, I have three printers in my office and a copier.
If there is, there is, and if there isn't, that's fine. But what I'm saying is we're paying a hundred percent of it. So if it is being used for other purposes for a private business, we're paying a hundred percent of that cost. I saw that we are paying separately for paper and other supplies. And in the receipt that we get that's very generic or the statement, whatever you wanna call it, that says we're paying for, you know, clerical staff and supplies, et cetera, et cetera, are those being double-billed to us because there's no itemization? If there was itemization, there wouldn't even be a question because we would know exactly what the rent costs. We know exactly what we're paying out to these employees for, you know, are we paying two part-time? And it's costing more than it would be for one full-time? Are we paying one full-time less benefits plus a part-time in addition to that? You know, we don't know, but we're just paying, 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 paying. That's the problem. That's why people have been upset. And the fact that we're paying utilities in a separate building when there's a building right here that is not being used.
Which building is right here not being used?
The courthouse.
Okay. Who, who, where are you going to put them at?
I'm not going to sit here and give you a restructure right now because that's all the.
Let's have a conversation.
That's all your Facebook page will talk about is how I wanna restructure the courthouse for six weeks.
It's on my Facebook page.
Well, you like to call the other one mine even though it's public access and everyone can see it. But the point is, I'm not going to sit here and restructure everything. I'm just going to say that at one point in time, there was an office in the courthouse for the county attorney. We didn't have an emergency management person and these other things. You know, we're now using this room, not using that room upstairs. The register of deeds is one person, person in an office that's bigger than this room. So I'm really not going to be game for the argument that there's no way to physically do any rearrangement.
My question for you is this. Emergency management you mentioned is in what used to be the county attorney's office. Where would you put emergency management? And where, conference room, a room to discuss with clients?
Well, just right.
Those are the things that, that I think about because I, I think you probably, if you have a, a part-time or let's say a full-time or a part-time staff, you have one staff member and you have the county attorney, you really need two spots. And then you need to be able to have a room, I mean, I guess they could go into the jury room when they need to, but if the jury room's being occupied, then where do they go? That, that's the question. Where is the privatization at a little bit? Just things that we need to think about.
The commissioner's room is always open.
No, it's not always open, but.
Well, if you have a meeting, I mean, maybe something's there, but it's, it's always there and it's not occupied by one particular person. And like I said, the register of deeds for one person with no clerical staff has a bigger office than anyone else.
Do you know what she does?
In her vault?
Yes, have you been in her vault?
No, I've not been in the vault.
Because she would have to have that office because she needs that vault. Go, go in and look at what she does.
I, I understand what you're saying about keeping the records. But it's the point that if, if you're going to do anything as far as rearranging, it's not that there is nothing that can be done. I mean, the room where you take the picture for the driver's license is bigger than the commission room, but for some reason, you take the pictures in the bigger room and have the commission meet in the smaller room. I mean, it doesn't really make any sense.
I'm not really sure it's all that much bigger, but I think just perception. By the time you shut it. Well, we have that vault, though.
Yeah, it's bigger.
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter. These are the, my question is.
If you're concerned about getting information, all you have to do is ask for the Attorney General opinion and we will know whether we're in violation or not.
No, you're not gonna talk me into doing that, number one. Nor would I appreciate some other elected department thinking that I did something wrong and get talked into, to asking for an Attorney General's opinion.
And this is exactly what Lincoln County has been doing. We have been protecting these things that are seemingly wrong because we will sit here and say, we don't want to upset anyone or we don't wanna know the truth.
What you're doing is you're throwing it back at me.
Yes, because you said you want information.
Ask for an Attorney General's opinion yourself.
I have, I have.
And what do they say? No, ask for yourself.
The board, the commission board has to request.
Exactly.
But don't come here and say that you really wanna know the information and the truth when you're not willing to find it. You just wanna have a negotiation process on behalf of someone else.
No, what you want, what you want is to bully me into asking for an Attorney General's opinion.
Why is it that you're doing that?
And I'm not going to do that.
Why is it that you are here to negotiate on behalf of someone else?
I am not. I am sick and tired of the conflict. I am sick and tired of every month, every week, it's something to do with this. If we really have an issue and we've gotten a resolution, an, an option, then why are we doing that? Why are we continually, it's been twelve months, twelve months and nothing has changed. And I'm sorry that that offends you that I would say something about that. I sit down here every single week, for fifty-two weeks I've sat down here and listened to the same thing over and over and over again, and I'm tired of it. That's why I want to negotiate. I guess I'm the fixer. I feel like maybe I can help fix it. It's not really my place, absolutely not. That's why I said it's uncomfortable for me.
I'm here because it's been years and years of the public being tired, Dawn. It doesn't have to do with you sitting there doing your job, being tired of doing it.
You say that and you say you get thousand, a thousand phone calls thanking them for the, for the videos and I, I get that. But I also get the same thank you, hang in there. I get the same phone calls every single week. I get from different people in the street saying, you're doing a good job, hang in there, even though it's implied that you're not doing a good job. So I apologize for trying to be a helper and a fixer in this situation. But if I can get some information that helps make this situation a little bit better, isn't that better?
But you don't wanna know the truth.
No, I'm not saying that. Ask the Attorney General yourself.
No one wants to know the truth here.
Ask the Attorney General yourself.
The Attorney General is not gonna issue an opinion because I wanna know the truth. The Attorney General will only issue an opinion if our county actually wants to know the truth.
I, I don't want to tell you.
You don't wanna know the truth. The truth is that it applies to every elected official, not just an official. Yes, it absolutely is.
You can sit here and think it is all you want to. I don't care.
Then why are you afraid to ask for the authorities' opinion?
Because I'm not gonna go waste somebody's time on the issue.
But you'll waste eighty thousand dollars on crushed concrete.
Every damn week on the issue.
If you consider wasting your time actually having to have a meeting where we have notes and where we have thorough minutes and where we have discussions, then I'm sorry that you've been wasting your time this year.
Attorney General's opinion.
Three terms before that, there was absolutely barely anything going on except for underhanded discussion and decisions being made out of the table, away from the table. Again, I would like to know what happened in the school board meetings where one person from the board decided to go into executive session with the school board. That was never discussed at a meeting, wasn't in the minutes. There was nothing there.
I think the only time we're actually an elected commissioner is when we're sitting in this room in session.
So what happened with the school boards that one of us decided to go into, into executive session with the board as an individual?
I, I don't.
As commissioner, it said right in the minutes, as a commissioner. It didn't say as, as a, as a person of interest in school.
The only time that person has any authority is when he's sitting in this room in session.
So isn't it interesting that there was a contract negotiated with both school districts by one person?
I don't think we have.
There was no contract negotiated in the school district.
Then what was it? I find it interesting that both, both school board meetings in the same month were attended by a commissioner.
We have no contract in schools. None whatsoever.
If you go back, if you go back in your minutes, can I talk? Will that offend you if I talk? If you go back in your minutes and you look at, there was a special meeting with the, with the representatives from Smokey Hill and they specifically requested an executive session. They presented a contract agreement in which they apparently wanted, wanted to ensure that the school districts received a certain percentage. There was no contract negotiation with the school districts. There was only a certain percentage that the school, that these wind towers are going to give. And the commissioners as a whole decided on dividing that up by tower. And I think that was in the minutes that they decided that X amount of each project was supposed to go to the school districts. And I think it's thirty-five percent. And then it was up to us to decide how to do that, how to split it out. So we went based upon the school district or the towers that are in each of the school districts to divide that up. So the school districts didn't negotiate nothing.
No, but I find it interesting that we, we have one commissioner taking it upon themselves to deliver this information secretly without the public knowing in executive session. I mean, these are the types of things. You don't really wanna know. You don't really want things to be out there. You don't want the information to be out there. The, the lid almost blew off the stack when I revealed that there's. The the lid almost blew off the stack when I revealed that there's six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in that capital improvement fund. I mean.
What what is that like about blow up the stack?
So you know, maybe you're a little groupie out there, follows along with what you do and thinks that everything is a big deal. But the vast majority of the people out there don't.
No, they know you don't think it's a big deal. They know you don't care.
I honestly, you know, you bring up the six hundred and ninety-two thousand or whatever it is in that capital improvement fund. I have been a I have been raked over the bushes by previous commissioners about that fund. But the reality is, in a cash carryover, but the reality is, is what happened? We had a commissioner that by God didn't wanna see the cash carryovers, did not like to see any cash carryover. Wanted to spend that cash carryover down. We spent the cash carryover down and then guess what happened? We had some kind of an emergency. I don't even remember what, but when the mill levy came out, it was a ten mil increase. Well, if we hadn't have spun down, spent down all of our cash carryovers, we wouldn't have needed to increase our mill levy ten mils. And and that's that's part of the reality. You kinda keep an ebb and a flow. And everybody has their different opinions and this was the 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 board's decision, not my decision. And I said, I I didn't think you should be carrying, you you know, cutting down. We used to levy an X X amount of dollars, and I wanna say it was a hundred thousand dollars to go into the capital improvement plan for capital improvement projects, courthouse, sheriff's department, landfill, whatever's on that list. They stopped doing that, which is fine. I have absolutely no problem with that. But then we had a roof replacement project and we had um the bats. The only reason why there's six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in there is because of that tall grass, tall grass, um is it tall grass? Whatever it is, Pony Express Pipeline. And that was partly because they come in to the commission meeting and they said, we're going to build this plant. We're gonna replace this, these pipelines. And you know, it's gonna bring you fifty thousand dollars or uh maybe it was five hundred thousand dollars worth of increased taxes. But then when the state assessed the value, because we have no control over that state assessed value, we have no idea what is going on with that because there's different component components that they have based upon whether or not the company is financially stable or it's not. And if it's sold, et cetera, et cetera. There's so many standpoints on that. And I would like to go some time to the meetings to understand how state assesses actually figure. But regardless, when the value came out, we could tell that their tax bill wasn't gonna be five hundred thousand dollars. It was gonna be a million dollars. Now, if you had a tax bill that you thought was gonna be five hundred thousand, it was all over, all of a sudden a million, what would you do? Would you protest it? I assumed that they would protest. We couldn't get enough information from when we were doing the budget from um this the um P V D to find out how the process works. So what we chose to do was be conservative and they didn't budget that they would protest a hundred percent of it. They budget uh budgeted that they would protest maybe half of that value. And they didn't. And the value has steadily increased. So that year, we had three hundred thousand dollars, or actually it was seven hundred thousand dollars or whatever it was. They chose to pay off all of the debt to get that taken care of and we had a a three hundred thousand dollar transfer into the capital improvement fund. Otherwise, there would be no money. There would be like three hundred thousand dollars in there and that would be it. And based upon the items that I gave you just last week or the week before, whichever week that was, we have three hundred thousand dollars worth of items. The courthouse alone is gonna be three hundred thousand dollars. That that, yes.
In the painting?
That would be my estimate, just because I know what we paid in nineteen ninety-two when we did the major remodel. And I know what or when we painted the last time and they did the handicapped accessible. And I know what they paid when we did the waterproofing of the foundation. We're not budgeting any money to go in there. The only way that there's money uh over there is that the funds are being the departments within the county general fund are being good and leaving enough money to do that. And you don't have to transfer that money over. That's a choice. And I didn't feel like I was cramming that down your throat at all, but if I was, I apologize. But I feel like my job is to be financially responsible and any excess funds that is in excess of what we need to transfer it out so that way we don't have to increase the levy if there's an emergency. And probably on that plan, it should have emergencies, say if there's an emergency. But one would think that we could probably amend it. So part of that capital improvement fund is me.
We got, we got a problem. I always like saying one thing. Have you ever thought ahead? How long do you think uh Lincoln County is gonna be able to be a separate county?
How do you foresee uh consolidation of counties taking place? It's been talked about.
I don't know if it'll happen in my lifetime, but it will. We're not in the horse and buggy days.
I agree. It's gonna be, there's gonna be consolidation in counties. There's gonna be consolidation in schools.
It can happen by public vote at any time. If if we chose to have a public vote where uh there would be a small enough portion to secede square mileage wise, then you know, you, there could be a an annexing.
You have to have a county that wants you.
We don't have any value. We don't have oil and gas. Nobody wants us.
Yeah, you know, in which direction, we're gonna be added on to another group grouping.
Honestly, we'll probably be divided in four. Would be my guess.
It'll be, you know, it's gonna take place all over western Kansas. For me, going highway west, everyone's in the same position, except for maybe Fannie County and Ford County. Otherwise, everybody's in the same position.
You have the same problem in Nebraska too, which is not Kansas.
Yeah, it's, you know, declining population, whereas there's four four counties in the state of Kansas that actually increase in population. All the rest decreased.
If the state would quit regu- quit regulating the investments and take the banks out of the equation and only regulate procedural aspects of local government, you'd have solved your problem, but they want to regulate the banking. That's how they ensure taxation increases. That that's your state legislators.
I feel like I've done enough today.
Thank you, Dawn. Alexis, you got something for us today?
Yes, uh there are a few things that we need to address as a follow-up of the job descriptions. And the first is um I'd like to make a motion. I move for the director of public works to provide two thousand and eighteen plan of action for the highway department. Informing prioritization of projects. Primarily which bridges are set to be fixed. And associated costs. I mostly.
Would it be possible for me to take either a picture or a copy each time?
Do you wanna reread it?
I got moved to the director of public works to provide a twenty eighteen plan of action for the highway department informing prioritization of projects, primarily which bridges are set to be fixed and associated costs.
Correct.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I would suggest that with that plan, we request an actual um average daily traffic on the bridges that we are going to be looking at. And if even if we don't need the engineer to do it, that we find an internal way to do that assessment. Because I do think that would be important if we're looking at working bridges. If we're not, we need to look at um landowners around the bridges that that are closed. If we're looking at any of those to be on our priority list. And as far as um you know, the use of the bridge and the traffic there and and the and the revenue generated in that particular area. If it's surrounded by pastureland, you know, obviously, we're gonna look at that as less intense than surrounded by cropland. Or how or the proximity, you know, at which it is positioned to in rel- in relation to um.
If that is part of your motion, I'll withdraw on a second.
No, it's not part of the motion. I'm just saying it should be a consideration in in.
I don't know that I'm in favor of establishing priorities for the county highway department. I would like to see their list and their reasons behind it. They probably know more about what's going on in this county than I do.
I have queried a list and there is no such list. I've Kansas Open Record Act requested to see a list and there isn't one.
Did I say there was a list?
Yes, you said I would like to see their list is what you said.
I well, from your motion, that's what I assume we're talking about is your motion. I'm not assume we're talking about history, are we? I assume we're talking about the present motion on the floor. That's what the discussion is on, isn't it?
Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll take a break. All those in favor, say aye.
Was that everybody and I?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
I'll move to your chair.
I'll second. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
I did sheriff's department.
Then the sheriff serves us a pleasure with his chair.
Did you have right before you a copy of that gravel contract that I didn't look at?
Um, yes.
I have an extra one, Howard.
I just wanna look at it just a second. I'm not gonna.
Here you go. I don't, there you go.
Okay, I just I'll give it back to you here. I just was curious what you was talking about. My mind follows everything pretty close, but I just was walking over.
Are you bragging, Howard, on your mind? Are you bragging on your mind now?
Well, it's it's reminded.